Evening. At this time, I'd like to call the July meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Linda, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Frere?
Here.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. Our first order of business is to approve two sets of minutes. We have the May, we'll start with the May minutes.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we call the roll?
Mr. Frere?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yeah.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. Next, I'd like to approve the minutes from the June meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion on those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, is that a motion to approve?
That is a motion to approve.
Thank you.
A motion's been made and seconded. There's no discussion, so can you call the roll?
Mr. Frere?
Abstain.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hoak?
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes. Before we call the first case, do we need to bring the alternate on, or do you want to call the case first?
Yeah, bring him up. You need the iPad?
No.
You're good?
So Linda, could you please call the first case?
Appeal of Michael Casella for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-16B 1 and Section 220-13 Schedule IG of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 3477 Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the LC Land Conservation Zoning District, to maintain an eight-foot-by-36-foot carport attached to the existing garage and to construct a 16-foot-by-28-foot garage addition, partially within the side yard setbacks. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building, as defined major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The garage, including the existing unpermitted carport in the proposed garage addition, is a major accessory structure. Section 220-16B 1 states that where the sidewall of a building is not parallel with the side lot line or is broken or otherwise irregular, the side yard may be varied. In such cases, the average width of the side yard shall be less than the otherwise required width, provided, however, that such side yard shall not be narrower than one point, than one-half the otherwise required minimum width. Section 220-13 Schedule IG requires a minimum side yard setback of 100 feet. As built, the carport has an average side setback of 12 feet, and as proposed, the addition would have an average side setback of 20 feet. Therefore, both an 85, 88-foot average side yard setback variance for the carport and an 80-foot average side setback variance for the addition are required. Eight notices were mailed out, zero responses with this notice.
Thank you. Laura, are there some things that the board needs to know?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So this case was a motion to table at the last meeting. It was discussed. But one of the things the board wanted us to look into was what was actually there. And between this meeting and the last meeting, we did discover that a carport had been added to the building without permit. So the reason that Linda reread the case is because the denial was updated for the carport, and it was actually renoticed to the neighbor because it was closer to the lot line. So that's why the case that you saw at the last meeting was for one variance for 80 feet, because the average side of the existing building, the existing garage here, is 20 feet to the lot line, which is a little variable. But the carport is eight feet closer. So for the carport, the carport was added as an existing structure as built, so to maintain, and that is only 12 feet from the lot line. So there's now two variances that were written in notice to everyone. One is for the proposed addition, which would be 80 feet, because the average setbacks, or the setbacks 100, and the second is 88, and that's for the carport that was added, I believe the applicant said, over 20 years ago. And then during just this last notification round that we noticed, I just have it up here. So here's the proposed addition. The carport is on this line, but closer to the southern lot line. This is the south. The whole entire width of the parcel is only 119 feet. So you've got 100 feet setback on either side, right, which would leave you almost nowhere to put your building. Well, but this garage was built without a variance to the northern lot line, which is this side, but we have now noticed that this garage is only 80 feet from this lot line, and it's supposed to be 100. So this, I think, is minimal compared to what you guys have been looking at before. But to keep the record clean, that was the email that I just sent to you. I would like to, like, just verbally amend, or maybe the applicant can verbally amend what is needed, for the proposed addition. The proposed addition would need to be 20 feet from the southern lot line, and it's 80 feet from the northern lot line over here. So they would need an additional 20-foot area, side yard setback variance, if that makes sense. Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
What, just a point of information, Laura. Specifically, what are the, what are the variances that are requested?
Okay, so there's a proposed addition. The proposed addition needs 80 feet to the southern lot line and 20 feet to the northern lot line in order to be able to build.
Two variants?
Two side yard variances.
Okay. 80 feet and 20 feet, separate variants.
Correct. And then the carport, which got added to the denial based on the discussions at the last meeting, needs 88-foot variance.
Thank you. I'm sure you said all that, but I just didn't.
Better to clarify.
Part of the one, part of the one line.
Yes.
At this time, I invite the applicant to step forward. Please state your name, address, and share with us your application.
Thank you. Michael Casella, 3477 Rosendale Road. We were here last month, as we know, and I spoke, and it seemed like things were going pretty well. There was a discussion about a carport, and I just want to clarify that when I put that carport up about 27 years ago, at the time, I was told that we did not need a permit because it was not a, there was no walls, it was a shed roof, which is now considered a carport. Okay. So it was put up 27 years ago. I don't see any reason why we need to take it down. Not bothering anybody. My kind neighbor was courteous enough to bring that to your attention. Anyway, it's been there for, here's a picture, as a matter of fact. My, my, my son, who's about 32 years old, drew that picture like 27, when he was like a little kid. So it's been there quite a while.
Mr. Casella, where exactly is the carport located? I'm having a hard time.
Well, if you're standing, if you're standing on Rosendale Road.
Okay.
Facing my property.
Okay.
If you look down my driveway.
Okay.
The garage is straight ahead. And as you're looking at, the carport is to the right side of that.
All right, I got it.
We had a discussion. Mr. Green asked if, you know, from the road, would this change be noticeable from the road? I said no, and it won't be. I indicated there would be no trees removed, there's no grading to be done, there's not going to block anybody's view. The building, if I do put the addition on, will still be smaller than the two buildings directly adjacent to that by several hundred square feet. So I'm convinced that the building will conform to the area. It's not going to have a negative effect on the neighborhood or anybody for any reason. It's just going to help me.
Mr. Casella, just for my clarification, I obviously wasn't here at the last meeting. The building directly to the right of the garage that's proposed to have the addition, that's not on your property?
No, that's my neighbor. There's a, there's a, there's a waterway between the two.
Okay. And the neighbor that was here at the last meeting, is that his property?
That is.
Okay. And that's his structure that he was concerned about in terms of erosion, I believe?
Correct. And I clarified that, that the erosion, when they built that building, I'm going to say 10 years ago, they put up all these concrete chunks, big piece of concrete behind it, next to this, next to the waterway. But they didn't have enough. So they only went, like, halfway down with the concrete. So there's no erosion there. The erosion occurs once it gets past that, now the water goes around it, and, so they didn't do it right. It's not my fault.
Is my understanding that you had work done on that, that stream? Is that correct? Because there was a previous violation, and there was work done?
Well, no, there was no violation. What happened was about 10 years ago, maybe eight years ago, we had a tremendous rainstorm. We had about four inches of rain in maybe an hour. And that waterway took a big swath out of my backyard behind the garage. It's there. So what I did is I started bringing material. I talked to somebody, you know, I said, I'm going to fix it. Then, well, they made me get all sorts of permits. It took about two years to get all the permitting done. But in the end, it was done correctly, legally, and it's fine.
Can you continue to, like, we have members here who weren't here last month, so just state for us what it is that you're looking for, what you're trying to do, and ways you tried to mitigate needing a variance, and then we'll get to the questioning.
Okay. I have a garage that I keep a couple of my cars, my lawn tractor, snowblower, you know, basic stuff in there. I'm retiring. I bought a Corvette that I'm going to restore, and I want to, I don't want to put stuff outside. So I just need a little bit more space so I can work on my hobbies now. Again, the, the building is going to look exactly the same, only it's going to be 16 feet long, or the roof line's going to be the same, same color shingles, same type of wall material, texture 111, same colored paint. It's, it's not going to be noticeable that it's going to be up, you know, enlarged.
At this time, I'd like to ask members of the board if you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Casella, and again, I apologize. I was not here last time, although I did review the, I did review the tape from the, from the last meeting before coming here today. Just so I'm aware, it appeared that your existing garage, as it is, is, I think you called it a two-and-a-half-car garage.
Correct.
Okay. And the carport that exists is, I ask what may be a silly question, you keep cars under there?
I keep my tractor and my, one of my trucks there, yes.
Okay. What I'm trying to figure out is, is, because I didn't hear a discussion, maybe I missed it, about trying to figure out the need for the expansion of the garage. And I understand that you want to, you know, restore a Corvette and whatnot. But with the carport there, and the garage that's attached to the house, and the existing garage that you now want to enlarge, you don't have room to do what you want to do.
I don't. And the reason for that, well, I'll, I'll go through your question, your statement. The car, the garage is attached to my house. I keep motorcycles in there because it's really tough to get a car in and out of there, because you have to, you have to, you have to pull into the garage, because if I backed in, the fumes would go into the house. So I have to pull the car in, and it barely fits. I put the motorcycles in there.
Can I stop you just a second, and I apologize for interrupting you? So is it the size of a regular one-car garage?
No, it's, it's much smaller. The car just, it's a small car, just fits in there.
Okay. So how many motorcycles do you have?
Three.
Okay. Is there a reason you can't put, for instance, your snow blower, your, your other items that you're looking to put in the expanded garage, you can't put them in there?
Well, three motorcycles takes, it's, the garage is small enough where three motorcycles fill it up. So no, I really can't put anything else in there. Maybe a bicycle, that's about it.
Okay.
As far as needing the space, my future bride is here, and she would like to park inside as well. So part of my, part of my thought process is to provide her a spot for her car.
Okay.
So not only am I getting a Corvette, I'm getting a wife with a car. So I got two more cars coming.
And you have the carport?
I do.
And right now, you can park, what, two cars in the garage that you have, the, the separate building?
Correct.
And you're looking to add a little bit more room so you can put the Corvette in there to work on?
And my wife's car.
Okay. So essentially, you're now going to put four cars in the new garage?
It'd be, go from a two-and-a-half garage, car garage to a four-car garage.
And then you also, and I'm sorry, I just, you also park additional vehicles under the carport?
I park one of my tractors under the carport and one of my trucks. I have, I have two pickup trucks.
Okay.
I have a car. I have two tractors, and three motorcycles, and another car, and another car coming.
So what I'm trying to figure out is, is, is the, the need for the additional space is essentially self-created. Is that fair?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Would you agree that what you're asking for is substantial?
No.
Why not?
I'm going to increase my building by less than 50%, and the entire building with the addition is still going to be smaller than the two adjoining, two adjacent buildings. So it's, it's going to conform to what's already there. Except in my case, my building is going to be in very nice condition where some of the other ones aren't.
Well, we're not here to talk about adjacent buildings. We're here to talk about your building.
Okay.
Okay, so let's not worry about adjacent buildings. My question is, in terms of being substantial, you have two cars in the existing structure, right? And now you're going to have four cars in the existing structure.
That's my intention, yeah.
So you've doubled the size of the existing structure?
No, I'm only adding 48%, but I'm, I'm going from a two-and-a-half to four. I mean, I could, if I really, really cleaned everything, I could probably squeeze three cars in there right now. But by putting the 16-foot in the back will give me enough room to put the car sideways and not interfere with what else is going on in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Chairwoman, just a clarifying question. The existing two-and-a-half-car building is about 1,000 square feet?
Correct.
That's pretty large. I'm trying to think, what, my two-and-a-half-car garage size is about 400 or so square feet. So it only fits two cars?
Well, I've got a workbench, I've got a drill, I've got, like, my woodworking equipment in there, I've got some metalworking equipment in there. I mean, it's, it's my shop. I, I have, my hobbies are here. Okay, I'm not, I'm not running a business, there's nobody bringing stuff there for, for me to work on. I just, my own, you know, my own equipment, my own hobbies.
And, and you mentioned that you're retiring, you, you had trucks and stuff that are under the carport.
Well, I have two pickup trucks.
Right.
That I, that I bring home. And they, they, they both, one's in the carport, one's inside the barn.
And you plan to keep those, of course, for it?
Correct. Well, when I retire, when I do retire, I'm not sure if it's going to be this year or next year. I mean, I just, I keep telling myself I'm going to retire, but I probably won't need two pickup trucks. Right now, I still do.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
You indicated just a minute ago that when we were talking about the carport, that you were told you, you didn't have to have a permit. Who told you that?
I didn't take notes 27 years ago. I, I can't quote anybody.
Well, in other words, was it a builder that, that built the carport? Was it somebody from the town who inspected the carport? Who, who, was it an official?
I, I want to say.
Just hang on, just a second.
Okay.
Was it someone in an official capacity that told you that, or just, just somebody just?
I, I want to say that it was somebody in official capacity, because I, if, it's a long time ago, but I do think that I recall calling the building department or whatnot, and they said a shed roof does not require a permit.
Did you tell, did you tell them you were putting cars under it?
No. I don't recall what I told them, but I don't, I don't think so.
Well, would be kind of important, though, wouldn't it? I mean, if you're, you're putting a shed roof with supports and storing a car under it, that's carport.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to find out, because it sounds like one of the reasons that you don't feel that, that this variance for the carports needed, I understand it's been up 27 years, but you don't feel it's needed because somebody told you you didn't need to have a permit?
If it was put up in, illegally, I apologize. I did what I thought was right at the time. I'm not a criminal. I don't do things like that underhanded.
Not sus, not, not claiming that you are. 20, let's assume it was put up 27 years. Is that still within the, the ordinances involving carports that we have?
Yeah, it, it would be. We don't have documentation that goes back that far, but I can see on an aerial that it was up since at least 2001. So I can confirm that it's been up since at least 2001, for sure.
But I'm just trying to find out if it predate, if by putting it up that long ago predates our?
It doesn't predate the zoning ordinance, and it wouldn't predate, predate the need for a building permit. But there are some exceptions. If you add something to a building, like, like, like a roof eve or something can go, can jut out, you know, and not count on a setback. So like, not knowing what a conversation would be 30 years ago, like, if somebody said, I'm just adding a little bit onto my roof, they may have received, you know, direction like that. It's possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Casella, you, you were referencing adjoining, adjoining properties where the, the addition, this garage with the addition being consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Which, which buildings are you referencing that are adjoining? Are you referencing the, the, the structure directly that's, that's displayed on that map directly to the right of the garage?
That's one of them, yes. It's, it's directly next.
And, and I'm a little confused still, but is that a garage?
It's a six-stall garage, yeah.
And that's on your neighbor's property?
Correct.
And was that the same neighbor that came in?
It is.
Okay.
He's the same neighbor that complained about my American flag fluttering in the wind.
That's fine. I just, I'm just trying, I, I understand, I understand what transpired last meeting. I, I reviewed the record as well. I just want to make sure that that's, that is in fact a garage. I see on one of the, two maps that I have that's referenced as a garage, but it wasn't, it's not referenced on that map as a garage. I just wanted to make sure, in fact, it was a garage, and it's a comparably sized building to what you're proposing, correct?
Yes, sir.
And does your, your neighbor have cars parked in there?
I think so. I don't go over there and check it out, but I, he's got quite a bit of equipment over there and things, and airplanes and stuff, so I'm sure it's full.
And did that, did that, that adjoining garage need any, any variances?
This area is actually very historical. I believe when, those are predating of the zoning code. They definitely would need variances if they're built now. But I think that he has something like five structures on his property, and they predate the zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the board wishing to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Casella. I was at the last board meeting and had several questions related to the rain runoff from the roof of your existing garage and carport. And I'd like to posit this question. If the carport was not built, where would the rain fall?
Next to the garage.
Okay. And falling next to the garage on your land as opposed to going directly into the street?
It doesn't go, currently, the carport that's there does not go directly into the stream. There's, there's still five or six feet of space before we get to the embankment.
Oh.
And I'd like to comment on that, if I may, and like, expel on that. I have a video on my phone, taken several days ago. We had a nice rainstorm. And that little waterway, I would, I, I was a firefighter, retired. I studied hydraulics for a year. Hydraulics is a study of water at rest and in motion. I would estimate that we're probably flowing at minimum, after a rainstorm, 1,000 gallons a minute through that stream. If we collected all the rain that came off of my building in, in a gutter into a barrel, it might take us three or four hours to fill up that 55-gallon drum. So my rain runoff is like throwing an ice cube into a swimming pool. It's not going to affect it, in my opinion. I'm not an engineer, but I, I know enough about it.
Thank you, Mr. Casella. I was curious about the distance between there to understand where that was falling off, because your neighbor had expressed concern about the direct. So thank you for explaining that.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one quick one. Have you looked at other alternatives to, to location for that Corvette that you could work on?
I, I have. And it's not really a matter of me not being able to afford another spot to rent or to buy. I like to keep my, I've been there 30 years, and I like to keep my things in my, my own property. And that way, if I get up at 4:00 in the morning, I can just walk down there and play with it, or do what I want with it.
And even within the property, you don't see any other location where you could locate this?
No.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I'd like to add on to that question in terms of location on the property. Did you look towards the left of the garage, kind of extending it on that side, similar to how you would put the carport on the right side?
Well, on the left side of the garage is my septic, a leach field. So that's, that's not really an option at this point. I need to have it, the sun on it, and it's, it's all new. I put it in 30 years ago, or 29 years ago, but it's not really an option.
Okay, thank you for explaining that question.
No, my pleasure.
Madam Chairwoman, I, I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I would like to make a request. That since I had an opportunity to review a submission, a sketch, and I believe other board members, did I ask that it be made part of the record?
Yes, it will be made part of the record.
Can I just make a copy of that if you're lending it home?
Make a copy, boy.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to give it away, but you're welcome to take it.
Yeah, I'll make a copy if you need to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Please come up, state your name, address, and speak into the microphone for the record.
My name is Bonnie Livingston. It's 37 Mary Hatch Drive, Schenectady, New York, 12309. I just, I took a video the other day of the stream. If you would like to see it, I'd be glad to let you see it. It's before it even gets to the buildings that we're talking about, because the waterway comes under Rosendale Road, comes through a tube with such force. But would you like to see it?
I don't know that it's necessary.
Yeah, um, yeah. Does anyone on the board want to see it? I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what Paul wanted me to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you. So our discussion seems to be over. The audience has been heard from. Is there any member of the board who wants to make a motion?
Mr. Person, I will make a motion, and I will take all three variances into consideration with this motion, and I would move. I think you just turned it off.
Yeah.
Oh, you turned it on. I would move to approve the applicant's request for variances. And I'd like to say that this is not an easy case, and it is a close case in my mind. I have taken the opportunity to review the proceedings from last month, as well as view the property, which is pristinely maintained. I appreciate the information that the applicant has provided with respect to the purpose for the variance request and the addition to his garage. I also take note of the fact that there was questioning with respect to whether there were any other alternative, feasible alternative locations for the car, for the additional structure for the carport. for the additional structure for the Corvette. And I appreciate that there's a fact that there was leach fields present, and there were other issues that restricted where the addition or where a structure potentially could be located on the property. And there would likely be need for variances, even in that circumstance, in any event. Whether the granting of the variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties because of the location of the garage and the fact that it is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, as well as the fact that there's a large garage structure very close by, it certainly would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It is a substantial request. And that is a factor that would justify the denial of the variance. But weighing, and it's also, as the applicant admitted, certainly self-created in the sense that the applicant does not need to maintain as many vehicles on the property as he intends to do. But balancing the factors, and as I indicated, is a close question. I think that the factors do mitigate in terms of granting the variance. And for those reasons, I would move to approve all three of the applications.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that for everything that was just previously said. And also that shed that you had there 27 years ago or whatever. I think I commend you for coming here and saying that you want the town to approve it. This way, there's no problems. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Mr. Freary?
I will state on the record that I do not oppose the request for a setback for the garage. I think the applicant has provided a suitable explanation. I think that the way the garage is being built, I think, minimizes the impact on the neighborhood. It is substantial, and it is self-created. And I accept the explanation of the need to expand the garage. However, because these have been bundled, all three of them, I have to vote no on the motion for the reason that I do not feel that the carport should be there. I don't care if it's been there for 27 years. It is a carport. It is a carport in the sense that it is, it is a structure that was placed to store cars underneath it. This town is consistently taking a very harsh look at carports. And I am going to abide by that precedent. So while I approve and certainly would approve, had it been a separate motion made, I would approve the garage expansion. I'm confined because these three variances are bundled to vote no on the motion.
Mr. Bage?
This was kind of a difficult situation. I agree with everything Mr. Hoak has stated. And also, I agree with what Keith, Mr. Freary is saying. However, I was of the opinion that the carport itself has been there for 27 years, and nobody took any action, nobody's complained about it. And it seems like it has, you know, not affected the environment or et cetera. So it should be fine. Versus the addition, which seems like a substantial request. And it's self-created. So two out of our five things that we look for are not met there. However, having said that, you know, the applicant doesn't really have another location where they could locate this proposed addition, where they could work on their hobby, which is basically renovating the Corvette. So I would be inclined to say that, and especially with the size of the property and not being visible from the road, except for the objections of his neighbor, I don't see how that addition would be detrimental to the area. So I would, you know, vote yes for the approval.
Ms. Pacheco?
I appreciate the concerns raised by my colleagues here. And I agree with all the sentiments so far presented. I would also, because of my lack of knowledge of our precedents regarding carports, I have to err on the side of caution and conservancy and say, and vote no on the motion.
Mr. Daley?
All the reasons that were stated and I stated, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes on the motion. The property, in my estimation, is unique. The application with regard to the expansion of the garage, I don't think is going to negatively impact the neighborhood, especially given the fact that there are, in close proximity to this proposed garage that's being expanded, another structure. I am troubled a bit by the carport. I have historically taken each case as it comes, but do not favor carports. However, in this particular case, again, given the unique nature of the property and also in part based upon the longstanding nature without complaint, as indicated by Board Member Mr. Biash, I'm in this one instance inclined to not decline the request. So yes, for the reasons in part stated by some of my fellow board members on the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairperson McGinnis?
I think it's important to note that this property is really unique in that it's...
Sorry, can you guys all turn your microphones off if you're not speaking into them? I just want to see if that helps.
Oh, you gotta turn yours off. Is that better? No, it's not. So it is a very unique part of town. It's a unique property, almost impossible for the property to conform to our existing zoning. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So as I was saying, it's a unique piece of property, a unique part of town. And I think that for that reason, that weighed heavily in the way that I am voting. I vote yes. We have, the motion carries. Thank you for joining us and enjoy your new garage.
Thanks, everybody, for your well-thought-out comments. And I look forward to seeing you again another time. Good night.
Thank you. Lynda, can you call the next case, please?
The appeal of Tanya Seifert. I was going to practice this. Seifert's Burger. For a variance from Section 220-18B2 and Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the residential, as it applies to the property at 2316 Niskuna Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a 15-foot diameter above-ground pool exceeding the number of allowable accessory structures and partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall be not more than three accessory structures on a lot. As proposed, there will be four accessory structures on the property, a garage, a shed, a fence, and a pool. Therefore, a variance for one accessory structure is required. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building as defined a major accessory structure are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 177 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of 15 feet. As proposed, the pool will be located four feet from the side property line. Therefore, an 11-foot side yard setback variance is required. 13 notices were mailed out, zero responses.
I'd like to ask the applicant to come up. Please state your name and address for the record. And please share with us what you're trying to do and what efforts you've made to eliminate or mitigate the need for variance.
Sure. My name is Tanya Seifert, 2316 Niskuna Drive. I'm looking to put up a 15-foot above-ground pool professionally installed. But I would like to make some changes to what I originally put down, if I could. I would like to try to move the pool closer to my garage, allowing a 12-foot difference between the pool and my fence with my neighbor, if that's possible.
Can I?
I mean, the applicant can verbally amend their request, but right now, your pool is shown at three feet away from your garage.
Yeah, I don't know what the measurements are that the town has. But when I put it right next to the garage and I measure out, it goes 12 feet to the fence. And I've measured it multiple times, so I'm not sure.
So the fence is right alongside the garage?
No, the fence is on the other side. So you have the garage, and on the other side is the fence.
So the diagram's up there. So you want to move the pool to the left until it's only 12 feet away from your left?
So I want it closer to the garage, basically right against it, if possible, allowing for 12 feet difference between the pool and the fence. Just so my neighbor, you know, I don't want to be up on my neighbor's yard. It's, I'm sure it's uncomfortable for him, and I don't want to do that.
Did your pool company define a minimum between the garage and the pool?
They did not, no.
That is our, that is one concern.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, ma'am.
On the plan that you have here, the width of the lot is showing as 45 feet 5 inches, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I got off of the town. But when I made the measure, when I took measurements, and I, like I said, I did it multiple times, it was 12 feet from where I wanted to actually put the pool.
Okay, I'm just trying to do the math.
Yeah, that's fine.
So 45 feet and a few inches minus the 10 and 1/2 feet of the garage would leave you with 35 and, or 34 and 1/2 feet between the left side of the garage and the fence on the left.
Okay.
If we take out the 15-foot size of the pool, which is a known, based on the manufacturer's information, that would leave residual distance of 19 and 1/2 feet. And you're, it sounds like you're trying to split that so that there's a small amount of space between the pool and the garage.
Yep.
And the remainder would be to the fence on the left. Is that correct?
Other questions from the board?
Just a couple of questions. So originally, you had four feet from the side. So who's on that side to the left?
My neighbor, actually.
Okay. All right, he'll get a chance to talk.
Yep.
So what does he have on his side? What are you looking at from your yard to his yard?
Nothing, really. I mean, he's got a tree in the middle of his yard, but there's nothing.
No pool, no decks, okay. So you're originally saying you have four feet aside from the pool to the side of your yard? And now you're saying you want to move it in?
I want to move it towards the garage.
Okay, so if you moved it toward the garage, it's going to be tight on the garage?
Yep.
And tell me about your garage accessed from the front, I take it? You don't have any doors on the side?
No.
Okay. And what's next to the garage to the right side?
My neighbor's yard.
Okay, do you have a fence in there?
The fence is all around my yard.
It's around, so is it around the garage or behind the garage?
It's behind the garage.
Okay. So it's behind the garage. So the wall of your garage, the back wall of that garage, that's where your fence is connected to?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, so if you want it to get around your garage, you have to go around the pool?
Yeah.
Like, if you want to paint the side of your garage, if you have that pool close to it, is that going to be a problem?
If I wanted to paint it, yeah. I mean, if it's against the garage, I wouldn't be able to paint it.
So if you have an issue with the side of your garage, the pool is going to be in the way?
Yeah, if I have to go in through the side.
Okay. So are you going to have any walking around it? If you moved it, going to have a foot or anything?
Well, I can walk around this side.
Okay, but you're not going to be able to go around the pool?
Right, not completely around.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out a way so that I could give my neighbor more room instead of being closer to the fence, you know?
Right.
Just trying to make everybody happy, yeah.
I understand. But also having a pool splashing water on your garage, it's going to be a problem just for you. So just to let you know. Thank you.
So how far, at this point, how far actually are, just because I think you're wanting to change your application, but I'm not sure we have this officially on the record. So originally, it was going to be four feet from the side yard. Now you're wanting it to be how far?
It would be close to 12 feet. If I brought it out a little bit more, maybe 10 to 11. I don't, you know, whatever works best.
What's...
I'm open for...
I'm confused here with respect, I'm confused with respect to what the applicant, application is for, with respect to the setback. If the, if the lot width is 45 feet, right? Am I missing something? Is the lot width 45 feet? And the pool next to the garage accounts for 25 and a half feet? It would seem like there's a significantly larger distance between the pool and the side yard. Are we talking about the side yard to the left?
Yeah.
So it would seem like you have a lot, I, I'm not, I'm not certain that you even need a variance.
So I think the concern is, is that, at least the applicant has expressed the concern, she's not confident in the measurements of the lot. I think fairly clearly, the only thing we know the measurement for is the pool.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's definitely not, what is it, eight? How far away does it need to be without a variance again?
15 feet.
15 feet.
Yeah, it's definitely not 15 feet. I would need a variance, definitely. When I did the measurements, it's 12 feet that I came up with. And that's right against the garage.
It would be, you would have 12 feet, so you would need a three-foot variance.
Right. That's with it right against the garage.
And that's what you want?
That's, you know, I'm, yeah, I mean, if.
Be very careful, I mean, because if we grant you a 12-foot or a three-foot variance and the pool company says you can't have the pool right against the garage.
Right.
That's a problem, because now you need to increase your variance, but you don't have that.
Right.
Laura, it looks like you've put something up for us to look at?
Yeah, so we can confirm this is the tax map, that the property is 50 feet at the front of the property line and 45 feet at the rear. So that's properly labeled on the diagram in your document, in your packet, 45 feet. It's not 45 inches. It's 45.45 feet, according to our tax records.
So Laura, just on that point, the 45 feet minus the 10.5 feet minus the three feet between the garage and the pool, and how wide is the pool?
15 feet.
So 15 minus that, then what are you left of?
19.5 feet. 19.5 feet.
19, not four.
She wouldn't need a variance.
Oh, minus three.
But see, the problem is, is this is, for lack of a better term, a pie-shaped lot, right? More narrow in the front, wider in the back. So.
Oh, yeah.
Wider in the front, more narrow in the back. So it depends where along that.
That's true.
That lot she's putting it, that's the problem.
That's true, too.
But we're measuring it at 45 feet, not 50 feet. We're measuring it to the smaller, the shorter dimension. And we're still coming up with 19 feet, correct?
19.5.
So you could actually move it over an additional four feet. Still wouldn't need a variance. You could have seven feet from the garage.
Can I, do you have a pool company that you would like to get this pool up this summer, right?
Yeah, August 18th is when it's set.
When's our next meeting?
18.
Yeah.
I think, Madam Chair, we can agree on what we're trying to approve for this applicant, so we can wrap it up. This way, if Laura can summarize for us what we're approving here, and then we can.
Yeah, okay, so the garage appears to be on the lot line, if you look at the, you know, the aerials, which are just, but, and also her diagram. So if we figure the garage is basically like on the lot line.
Which, I'm sorry, which lot are we looking at?
It's this one here, the 2316.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So the garage is definitely, and according to her diagram, which you have in your packet too, it looks like very, very close to our, on the lot line. So then that's 10.5 feet. I really think just to be safe, you need that three feet between the garage and the pool, at least variance-wise, because, like, of building code. But so that would put it at.
13.
13.5 feet from that lot line, and then I think you have plenty of distance on the other side. I think the diagram's wrong. So I think you would be looking for, that's a pretty minimal, I mean, even if you wanted to say, you can get it to the closest to the garage that you want, like, say, say 12 feet from the lot line, then you'd be granting a three-foot side yard setback for the pool.
Right, so we're talking about three, three foot, no, not.
Yeah, because if she's talking distance to garage, the four feet that's labeled on the left of the pool is incorrect. There's no way.
Yeah.
The, the variance that she's looking for, bringing it closer to the garage is going to bring it closer to the, to the right line, the south lot line.
I think, I think where they made the mistake, they subtracted the 22 feet from the side of the pool instead of the, the garage. And I think that's where they made the mistake. If you look at where the pool is, it said four feet to the pool, and that's where the mistake is. You see that on your chart? So you're now four feet to the side from your neighbor's property. You have more distance in there.
Yeah, I think I was measuring from the.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You measured from the garage.
Getting at the garage.
Subtracted, so you still have that 15 to play with.
So you only, so you only need a 1.5-foot variance to the right?
Yeah, and if you wanted to be conservative, based on how close by building code she could put it to the garage, you could go as high as like three.
Three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
So if you put three and your pool is 15, that's 18. And your garage is 10.5, then you still have the rest of that, because you have almost 46 feet where that location. I know in the back, it's 45, but if you go down, it's going to give you another foot, probably to play with in there.
And, and I see on this diagram also that you have shed removable. Does this, does that mean you're removing the shed, or?
Well, actually, I am removing it next week. It's a small plastic thing. I don't even know if it's big enough to be a major structure. But I don't have on there, I want to add this as well. I have a platform that my gazebo sits on, it's just a wooden platform, the size of the gazebo. I don't have it on there, but I didn't realize it was a major, it would be considered a major structure. I, I don't know if it would or wouldn't.
So just for the purposes of the record and clarifying the accessory structures, we have a garage, as proposed, the garage, a gazebo, a fence, and a pool, correct? Because you're going to be removing the shed.
The shed's coming out next week, yes.
Okay. So instead of a shed, we have a gazebo?
Yeah, just a, a small wooden platform, so the gazebo sits on it, so it's not on the ground, same size as the gazebo.
Would that be, would that be an accessory structure?
Well, the actual base of it isn't, because unless it's like two feet above the ground, but the gazebo itself definitely is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a pop-up thingy gazebo, that's, that's a structure as well?
Oh, you remove it, you take it down?
Oh, yeah, so you remove it during the winter.
Like a pop-up?
So it doesn't.
It's like a pop-up?
It's got metal framing on the outside, but it's cloth.
Is there a, is there a amount of time that it stays up that it becomes an accessory structure?
No, but we typically consider if it's like removable, like, if you, you know, like, remove it in the winter, then it doesn't typically trigger an accessory structure.
Okay, so, so what I, what I understand is that the gazebo with the platform is not an accessory structure, and you're removing the shed. So that would mean you would only have three accessory structures in the lot, you wouldn't need that variance.
Okay.
Is that what you, is that what you contemplate? I'm not, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the gazebo platform. I wasn't sure how that went. But yeah, that is exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, how high is the platform from the ground?
Yeah. It's very small.
It's not, we wouldn't count that.
So then, the only thing that we're really talking about is a, a side yard setback variance from the, as the diagram is displayed currently, to the right, from the pool to the right of the garage.
Right.
And, and you, to be conservative, we, you indicated, and this is my understanding of your application, that you're looking for a three-foot setback variance.
Correct, that's what we came up with, I guess, yeah.
Okay, and, and that's the only, that's the only application that's, that you're seeking from the board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're not, there's people from the audience who wish to be heard, so.
Are you, did you want to come up?
If, if there's anyone from the audience who wishes to be heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
John Hewitt, 2324 Niskuna Drive, Niskuna, New York. I didn't, you know, know anything about this until I got the letter. And obviously, the four-foot part is the part to scare them. I didn't want to have a big pool right on top of my backyard, which is just all nice and wide open. So I talked to Tanya, and she was cool about it. We talked about maybe putting it behind the garage, different places, but it's too wet back there, and there's trees. Sorry, there's trees in the way that would give her, she'd, you know, be in the shade. So she said she tried to move it over to the garage. Here's the only part that I'm confused by, because you guys are going through the math of what you've got in front of you, and you're saying there's plenty of room, but you guys actually measured from the garage over 15 feet, like, like flush against the garage, and then measured from that point to the fence and said you only got 12 feet. So I'm not sure how, whether there's all this extra room, but.
My measurement, so I don't know how good I am.
Okay, but, so the four feet, I was not happy about it. If it's 12 feet, I have no problem with that, as long as it's not right on top of my backyard. I'm fine with it.
I think the consensus is that the four foot, as, as expressed on that diagram, is, is not possible.
Yeah, that's not the scale at all. I'm just saying, you guys are coming up with a bigger numbers, like saying, so you've actually got 19 feet, so if you went over three, you'd still have 16, and all that kind of thing. But when she actually did the measuring, that wasn't the case. She had flush against the garage, out 15 feet, and then from that point to the fence, she said it was only 12 feet, which, which I was fine with. But if you're talking about moving it another three feet, that was my only concern. I, I wanted to keep it as far away from my line as possible. If, if it's 12 feet and that, and all your measurements are correct, then that's, that's great. I have no problem with it.
Sir, sir, just a quick question for you.
Yep.
By looking at this, I mean, we looked at the map, it's 45 feet from the top, so it's probably where you're looking at, the lower 22 feet you said there, it's about 46, you know, 40, 45 and a half. So if the math, if you look at it with the garage 10.5, you know, I mean, is her, see, this is where it gets tricky, because if the garage is not 10.5, then that's when you're missing that calculation.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, if that, that's the only thing I can think of.
So that's something the town, we will look at it when we approve it or not, you know.
But over, but overall, you're talking about three feet.
Do the math, just saying to you, if we do the math, you're calculating a total of 16.5 from your property, if the other number's all accurate.
Right, no, I agree. That's why I prefaced everything by saying, based on your numbers, that sounds like, like, great, but when it was actually measured, that wasn't the case. That's what I'm saying, so maybe that.
So, so you don't, you're okay as long, it's like 12 feet or something like that?
Absolutely, no problem. And if you're wondering, I mean, I've got pictures of everything. It's definitely just a gazebo that can be removed. If you're wondering what it actually looks like, it's just pops up and down. Do you want to look at it, or? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because patios don't need building permits, and if people pop things up from Lowe's over the summer, we don't, as long as it's something very similar to that, we wouldn't. But like, so I just pulled up, I think, a better aerial than what I had on my computer, just from Google. Google's better than what the town has. And it, so, I mean, I, my guess is actually the lot line probably goes right through the driveway. This looks like a shared driveway. Yeah, in which case, the garage is probably not quite on the lot line. It's, I mean, to be safe, it's really, it's, it's hard to say. I think the measurement, like, do you know what the measurement is from your garage to your lot line? That may be the missing measurement that we don't understand.
Can you come speak to the microphone, please?
Like I said, the only thing is, is when I measured it out, I came up with 12 feet. I'm not sure where the difference is with my measurement and what the town has. So I, you know, I just, I want to be safe in whatever variance I need.
Yeah, I mean, again, that raises the question, if it is, in fact, 12 feet, then you're going to need, still need a variance on the other side as well. So that's why it's kind of important to know, you know, we're kind of guessing here. What is, what is it, just as I'm looking at that picture, what is that light blue structure?
That is an intex pool I got like three years ago, and it's got a hole in it.
So that's coming out?
Uh, yeah. It's a, they don't last very long. That's why I wanted to get an actual professionally-installed pool. But yeah, it's, that's coming out, and I went through the town for that as well, but it was, it's a rectangular, so I didn't need a variance or anything for that. But like I said, it's one of those cheap intex ones.
I mean, my, my only concern is, you know, is having an accurate understanding of what exactly we're, we're granting here tonight. And, and that's, you know, from your perspective as well, you want to make sure that you, if we were to grant the variance, you get all the variances you need to do what, you know, you would, you intend to do there. So I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, when I measured it, it was 12 feet, and that's with it against the garage.
Okay, so, since you measured it, and that's accurate, more than what we're looking at, from the garage to his property, if I was to calculate that in my head right now, you, you take the first three feet from the garage to the beginning of the pool, then you add the 15 feet, that's 18, and from there, you're talking, you measured after that 15, you have 12 feet?
If I brought the pool in closer.
Oh, bring it closer, I want to know where you got that 12 from.
So then if I didn't, it would be, let me look at my calculator.
How far is it from your garage before you put the pool to his side of the property? That should equal to, in my calculation, what you said, because you measured the pool, it was 12, so that's 18 feet is left, 15 for the pool and three from the garage.
Right.
So.
So then it would be.
There'll be 30 feet from the garage.
So it would be like a nine-feet difference if I brought it three feet out from the garage?
So when you measured from the garage to his side, is it 30 feet?
It would be three plus, 20, it would be like 26 feet. If I did three feet from the garage, plus the 15, then it would give a difference of eight feet, because when I said the 12, that was with it right against the garage.
Oh.
So it would be like 26 feet. From the fence to the garage.
So you must be eating more of your property from the garage to the other side, like Laura was saying, you probably have, you don't have that 10.5.
No.
So you must have more footage is eating up some of that property, and that's why you came up with that number. Okay, right? So, so it looks like to us, you have 26 feet, according to your measurement, from the garage to the side of his property. And now you're trying to fit 15 feet and trying to have a three foot from the garage to the pool, and you came up with how many?
That would be eight feet if I had to bring it out three feet.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we have a better idea.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be nine feet?
It should.
12 minus three is nine?
Yeah, well, we'll do that. So I'm assuming they have 26 feet from the garage to the side, that's.
So on, on that side, you would need a six, six-foot variance. So you need one and a half feet on one side, and then a six-foot on the other side.
So minus 18, okay.
I think based on what Laura said, as far as the lot line on the other side might not be flush with the garage, that it might change the variance needed on that side.
Yes, so I think I understand her diagram now, because I was just measuring on the GIS. So she measured between the garage and the edge of her house, I think, right?
Yeah.
So from the back corner of her house to the garage is 22 feet. Her house is probably another two or three feet off of the property line, between you, between him. Like, both your houses are pretty close to the property line there. They're probably only like five, six feet between the property lines. If I measure on the GIS, I think there's a total difference of the houses, between the houses, is a total of like 15 feet. So you guys probably have about seven and a half feet on either side. And you might even have a bit more. So she's probably like. So she's probably like maybe five feet from that lot line. So you're... So you're like... So the garage to the his neighbor's lot line is like 27 feet to be safe.
Okay.
And so then you minus that 15 from that is 12 feet.
So that will give you nine feet.
And that's if you're right on the edge of the garage. And if... Yeah, so if you move it to three feet off the garage, then you need nine feet.
Nine feet, yeah.
So you would need...
So you'd be nine feet from the property line there.
And then you'd need more than one and a half feet on the other side, because it's not flush with the property line.
Yeah, well, because then you go back to the funny math with the 45, though.
Right.
I think that you must be far enough away, because the garage is at an angle.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to be safe, she's looking for a variance for six... Do we have to be 15 to the side?
So if it was nine feet from 15, it's six feet.
Six feet.
So rather than four feet, she's admitting her request is six feet.
All right.
Sorry to keep everybody on their toes today.
Her request was for four feet from the property line. She's now asking for six feet from the property line. She's now asking for six feet from the property line.
Nine, nine feet.
Oh, yes, you're right. Yes, you're right. Yep, you're right.
When you speak, you need to talk into the microphone. Sorry. So it's part of the record?
Yeah. It's a nine-foot variance. The pool would be six feet from the lot, from the property line.
I thought I was correcting it. It's a nine variance.
I believe someone has a question for you as well.
So now, this is since you know what's going on. So if you can tell us how you feel about this.
Not as good as I did when it was 12 feet.
Right.
But, you know, I understand their problem that they got a pretty narrow backyard, and they want to put a pool in there. And it's not like they use it constantly. So it would be on the rare occasion that they'd be back there. So I guess I can live with nine feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? Yes.
Thank you, Tim.
Are we waiting for them? I'm going to, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve this variance. It looks like the applicant looked at a lot of options, trying to fit this pool in there. And it was not possible to achieve this pool without... Just to clarify also, we're approving a nine-feet variance to the side. So the applicant looked at other options, and it did not find any other way because of the uniqueness of this property, and they're so close to each other. So is it going to cause any undesirable change in the neighborhood? It's not going to cause... Only issue is going to be for the neighbor to the side, they'll be able to see it. And the neighbor was very reasonable to understand the situation, and he was okay with it. Is the request substantial? Most of the cases, the request is substantial. But again, I have to say, the pool is not really that big. What makes the pool big to get that variance requested, because again, the size of the property is not there. Is this alleged difficulty is self-created? In a lot of ways, it is self-created. But we understand you need a pool in there. And unfortunately, again, this property is unique and small that you can't fit any other pool in there. Would the request have any adverse physical or environmental effect? I don't think it's going to have any effect on environment. So for all these reasons, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion we approve this variance.
Okay, I'd just like to clarify for the record. I believe we all were discussing and agreeing to that it was a six-foot variance that would place the pool at nine feet from the property line.
No, the other way.
The other way.
Yeah.
We are in the middle of a motion. We are in the middle of a motion.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that it is the correct motion.
No, we're in the middle of a motion. Nobody...
But I can speak with counsel.
He was going to come up.
So how do we proceed when we're still questioning?
If there's a question as to the motion that's being made, I think that we can seek clarification on that.
That's what I believe Ms. Pacheco was doing.
My understanding, based on the discussions we just had, is that the edge of the pool would be placed nine feet from the property line. It's a 15-foot side yard setback, which would require a six.
I'm seeing six feet from the property line with a nine-foot variance.
It's opposite.
I'm sorry, that's not my understanding of what was discussed.
I know. I made the motion according to what we discussed on a nine-feet variance, right?
Yeah, so just doing that math. So...
And I originally said the six feet, and then we were corrected by you, Laura, to say it's a nine feet.
Yeah, so because we're figuring it's 26 feet from the garage, 27 feet from the garage to the left lot line. And the pool's 15 feet, which leaves 12. And then you got to move it three feet away from the garage, which means the pool is nine feet from the lot line. So Katrina's correct.
Hmm?
Yeah.
So we are back to the six foot?
So the pool could, can be located nine feet from the lot line, which means it would be a six-foot variance request.
Okay. So I'd like to clarify my motion to have a... To approve the variance for only six feet, and that should make the neighbor more happy this time and for all the other reason I stated before.
I'll second the motion.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Freary?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
I'd like to note that weighing heavily on my vote of yes is the neighbor's participation and agreeing with the essence. It's just probably tipped this in order. So yes.
Mr. Hoag?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated. And I'd like to reiterate the appreciation for the applicant and the neighbor working together, and also to my colleague, Ms. Pacheco, for correcting our math. Your motion, your variance has been granted. Enjoy your pool.
Enjoy your pool.
Would the clerk call the next case, please?
The appeal of Jessica and Todd Krokowski for variance from Section 220-18B2 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1725 Van Antwerp Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to construct an 18-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool exceeding the number of allowable accessory structures. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall be not more than three accessory structures on a lot. As proposed, there would be four accessory structures on the property, a shed existing, a fence permitted, a hot tub permitted, and the pool. Therefore, a variance for one accessory structure is required. 11 notices were mailed out, zero responses.
Is the applicant joining us via the computer?
So when the applicant doesn't show up, it can't be used against them that they're not here. But you just have to weigh the application on the merits of what's written.
All right. We'll take a few moments to review it and start asking questions of one another.
Well, it looks like they only asking for another structure, correct?
That's the only variance.
Yeah, they only are asking for the pool. They have the hot tub, the fence, and the existing shed currently.
So they have the fence. And usually, if they put a pool, they would need a fence. So the fence is already there.
It also looks from like, from the application that we're dealing with a sizable piece of land here, one-plus acres. And the applicant has taken the time to retain a landscape architect. And it looks like a significant amount of landscaping is going to accompany the pool. And it seems like, to me at least, all of the accessory structures logically relate to the property. That's just what I see from the application.
Yes.
I would also add that it seems like with the addition of the pool, they are not looking for another shed for the equipment. It seems to be that they're trying to keep the equipment in one of the existing sheds. I don't see anything additional there.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I wish the applicant were here. I'd like to state that on the record.
Well, I do want to note that we did have one other person in the audience who appeared to have to leave abruptly. I don't know if that was them or not.
I'm really capable of rendering a decision based upon the application in front of me. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. It would be nice.
Right. But my point is, I saw a person here who had to leave abruptly. So there could have been an emergency call or something. I don't... I don't know that it's necessarily disrespectful to us. I don't know that it was intentional.
It's not an issue of disrespect or intention. What it is, is if a board member has questions that need to be posed to the applicant, then that's the issue. The issue is if Mr. Green has questions for the applicant that could sway or affect his decision on the motion, then that's the issue. Otherwise, if the board members don't have questions and feel they can render a decision based on the paper that they have in front of them.
Yeah.
That's the standard that we have to apply.
Would we like to table this?
Which can be done and have the applicant appear at the next meeting.
But I don't think, from what Mr. Hoag said and we said, that we will have any questions to the applicant, because it's a clean cut. I mean, all you're doing is putting that... There's no... It's just another structure.
Well, Mr. Latif, I think that's for the board member with questions to make an application available. If he believes that, then... And I'm not speaking for Mr. Green. Obviously, Mr. Green can make the motion. I agree with your position, but I think the, any member can make the motion.
It's not being denied. It's simply being tabled.
Right.
So that would be up for a motion to table. If it was at that point in the meeting, or the application, we would be making motions.
Right.
Well, we're open to motions. We can have a motion to table. We can have a motion to approve. We can have a motion to deny. It's up to you all.
I'd like to make a motion that we have the applicant here.
So, but just to clarify, yeah, Elena, I mean, you can't actually use it against them that they're not here.
Right. So you can't table, make a motion to table just because the applicant's not here. If you have legitimate questions that you feel you need to have answered before you can vote one way or another to grant or deny the request, then that would be when a motion to table would be appropriate.
And I think that's exactly what we said. If there were questions that the board members had for the applicant that would prevent them from rendering a decision, then a motion to table is appropriate. I believe that was the issue. Correct, Mr. Green?
Correct. And I've had further opportunity to review the written application in front of me that would satisfy any questions that I might have added to the applicant if the applicant were in front of me.
Okay.
So I'm not making a motion to table.
Okay.
Mr. Daley is making a motion to table. And is that your understanding of why you were making a motion to table, Mr. Daley?
Yes. I think it's been this board's policy, as long as I've been on this board, that has the applicant present. Because there are questions the boards want to ask the applicant. Now, if he's not here, we can't ask the applicant any questions.
But what counsel has explained to us is we cannot... Would you like to explain it again? That...
If you have any legitimate questions that you... As to this particular application, that as you sit here, you have questions that you need to have answered by the applicant before you feel comfortable voting yes or no on this variance request, then a motion to table to have the applicant present would be appropriate. But if you feel as though you can review the application on its face, on the papers, which is a request for a fourth accessory structure, without having the applicant present, because you don't have any questions of the applicant as any questions or answers to those questions you may have is contained in these papers, then we do not need to have a motion to table to have the applicant present. You can move forward with the request tonight on a motion to either approve or deny.
So, Mrs. Daley, you have particular questions in your mind? That would be the basis for your motion?
Yes, I do have questions.
So we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Make a move.
You already made the motion.
I already made the motion. We need a second.
Right. Is there a second? The motion is not seconded. Is there another motion?
Mr. Chairperson, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a variance for a fourth accessory structure. I will note the reasons or thought process behind the motion. As I previously indicated previously, the applicant is seeking to install a pool. And the existing structures currently include a shed, a fence, and a hot tub. The pool would necessarily require a fence. And the hot tub and the shed logically are related to this particular property, given the size of the property, which is indicated to be at least an acre in size. And given that the application includes a landscape architectural drawing of the plantings and the nature of the pool, I don't believe it's going to have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. If anything, it appears that it will enhance the property and subsequently enhance the area in which the property is located. The variance, I don't believe in this particular case is substantial, given the... Although the structure itself, maybe, the pool may be substantial, I don't think the request for the variance in the circumstances is substantial. I'm not aware of any adverse physical or environmental effects the installation of the pool on this property would have. Again, there's an acre of land in which to add the pool. And certainly, we're dealing with a self-created situation, as most of the applications that come before the board are.[1787.96] But in my mind, that is not dispositive of this particular application. For those reasons, I would move to approve the variance.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'm going to second the motion for everything Mr. Hoak said, and I'd like to add that we have had some situation like this, and usually, you know, the hot tub is the people asking for. In this situation, this property has enough acres on it, and, and I think it will be no effect for the neighbors, or it will, actually, it will benefit the applicant to have it. So, for all these reasons, I'm going to second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Delight?
Yes, for reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Chairperson, begin us.
Yes. The variance has been granted. Would the clerk please call the next case?
Appeal of Craig Sarafini for a variance from section, from Schedule IE Part 2 CH, District Schedule of Supplementary Regulations for the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property of 3410 State Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the CH Commercial Highway Zoning District, construct in addition to an existing building partially within the front and side yard setback and not meeting the required off-street parking spaces. Specifically, the application was denied based on the following requirements of zoning ordinance: Minimum yard dimension setback, Schedule IE Part 2 CH District, Schedule of Supplementary Regulations, Town of Niskuna, includes listing of permitted uses and minimum yard dimensions, front rear, front, um, front side rear. As mentioned above, 3410 State Street includes two principal uses: retail, automotive sales. The minimum yard dimension setback requirement for the automotive sales use are greater, more restrictive, so they are used in this denial. The minimum yard dimension setback for the automotive sales and service establishment are listed as front 50 feet, side 25 feet, and rear 40 feet. Town records show that the following area variances have been previously granted for the property: front yard setback to State Street of 50 feet, front yard setback to Albany Street of 10 feet, side yard setback to Western Property Line of 15 feet. The site plan indicates the proposed addition comes with 2.7 feet of right-of-way with the Albany Street, therefore, an area variance of 37.3 feet is necessary for the front setback of the building, including the addition to the Albany Street. The side, the site plan also indicates the side of the proposed addition comes within 8.9 feet of the Western Property Line. Town records show that an area variance for a side setback for the existing building to the Westernly Property Line of 15 feet exists, therefore, an area variance of an additional 1.1 feet or 16.1 feet total is necessary for the side setback of the building, addition to the Western Property Line. Two, minimum required off-street parking spaces, Schedule IE Part 2 CH District, Schedule of Supplementary Regulations, Town of Niskuna lists the number of parking spaces required for retail and automotive principles, uses as a function of gross area and retail selling area respectively. The minimal required off-street parking spaces for general building and non-medical professional, professional offices is one space for each 225 square feet of gross floor area. The site plan indicates 2,250 square feet of gross floor area for general business use, therefore, 10 parking spaces are required for the general building use, business use. The site plan indicates 248 square feet of retail selling area is used for automotive sales use. Schedule IE Part 2 indicates that one parking space is required for each 75 square foot of selling area, therefore, four parking spaces are required for the automotive use, or 14 total. The site plan drawing indicates that 14 parking spaces are available, however, two of the spaces are labeled automotive display, therefore, a variance of two parking spaces for general business use is required. Fifteen notices were mailed, we received one verbal response, which Laura will detail, a county referral, which deferred to local discretion, and then a planning board referral, which Laura will read.
Yeah, so, we received a call to the office just before 11, just around 11 a.m. this morning, from someone in opposition who lives directly across the property on Albany Street. The county did defer to local consideration, but did say that they would like to see that the building looked nice, because it's so close to the Albany side. And then the planning board voted for the effect on the comprehensive plan. The board agreed by unanimous vote of 7-0 that the area variances and the two parking space variances will have no effect on the comprehensive plan for suitability of use. The board voted 7-0 in favor of the suitability of use on the area variances, and then they voted 6-1 in favor of the suitability of use on the parking space variance. The board member who voted against the suitability of use for the parking space variance stated that they thought only two parking spaces for the automotive sales use took two away from the code, and so then the parking was not adequate for the building. The recommendation from the zoning, from the planning board was for the zoning board to approve both the area variances and the parking space variances. They voted 7-0 to support the recommendation for the area variance for the addition, and they voted 6-1 in support of the parking space variance request. They summarized their support for the area variances based on the following: The property at 3410 State Street is unique with front setback requirements to both State Street and Albany Street, and as proposed, the addition will be an improvement to the portable storage unit currently on the site. The current building is pre-existing, non-conforming relative to the current zoning code, and so the approval of the variances will allow a longstanding Niskuna business to remain in the town. The board member who voted against the recommendation on the parking spaces repeated the concern that if they removed the two parking spaces for automotive display, it did not seem adequate for the automotive use. And then, just, just to remind you guys, you took action on a variance recently to allow the storage pod to stay on the property until the applicant could come forward with a more permanent solution to the property. And so, this is, there was a timeline that you guys laid out when you granted the variance for the pod, and so this is a continuation of really what you guys saw a couple months ago, and in the packet, it has elevation drawings and the site plan, which shows the proposed addition.
That, that was the gun shop and auto store.
Yes, and we did the, so normally you can only have a pod for two months, and I think you guys allowed it for a year, but in six months, he needed to submit a site plan that would show a more permanent thing beside the pod.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back. I'd like, ask the applicant to state your name, address, the request before us, and what you've done to mitigate the need for the variances.
Hi, Craig Sarafini, 3410 State Street. I also have Matt Hoffman, who is my project engineer, on, with us as well. Because the variances are numerous, I will defer to either what you've already seen or Matt to actually, you know, go over each one with you. But as regards to how I've attempted to minimize the, the variances, frankly, there's not many choices. We looked at different ways to expand into the middle of our parking lot as opposed to towards the Albany Street side, which would be considered another front yard. You know, we've looked at going up, we've looked at every direction that we could, and unfortunately, due to the, I guess the word is unique, nature of this piece of property, we had no directions to go, other than literally to leave this property and go somewhere else. And, you know, with my history in Niskuna, that was the last choice that I'd like to pursue. So, you know, with all of that in mind, we came up with what we felt was the most workable solution to remaining in this position, which was to put this addition on, and, you know, to kind of follow the setbacks of the properties that are closely adjacent to our building.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, if you could just help me out with the, refresh my memories to the lay of the land, the neighborhood, on the Albany Street side. If this application were granted, what's the distance between the back of the, the back of the building and the front of the closest house across the street?
I'll be honest with you, I haven't measured to anybody's home, so that's one I do not have a answer for you. I can tell you that the neighbor that is directly behind me, Earl Rowe, he wrote a letter in support for the last time that I was before your, your board, and he is still in support. The neighbor that has a concern this time through, unfortunately, I have not had the opportunity to speak with them, I did not know there was any concerns, but I can tell you that there is, reasonably, there's got to be 75 feet between the side of the building and proposed side of the building in their house, considering the width of the road and the setback to their house as well.
Mr. Sarafini?
Yes.
What, what, just to refresh my recollection, is, so why do you need the additional space?
As our business has grown, we need additional retail space. In addition to that, we have, due to the nature of the business, requirements for secure storage of documents and, you know, other items that relate to the business. And that's how the, the pod came about, and, you know, this was our evolution of such to, you know, bring it into a contained building and have everything properly secured.
So, so I assume that there's certain regulations with respect to the storage? I mean, there's a firearms, there's firearms sold from this location, correct?
The gun store is, yes, it's a firearm store.
So, I assume that there's regulations with respect to the security of maintaining weapons in the store, correct?
To be perfectly blunt, there is no regulations in regards to it. So, I, I know, so I take it upon myself to go above and beyond anything that I can consider as reasonable to secure that in a way that I feel is going to be the best for not only my business, but the community around me.
So, would it be correct to state that some of the, some of that, those materials, whatever those materials may be, are currently stored in the storage locker, the temporary structure in the back?
I, no disrespect, but being as this is an open forum, I prefer not to discuss any security arrangements.
Okay.
I think the board is pretty intelligent and, you know, can kind of formulate their own opinions on that.
Well, let me just ask you this. I, I guess what I was getting at was that the addition of the additional structure on the back of the, the property would enhance the security of the, of the property as a whole. Would you agree with that?
Without a doubt, I agree 100%.
Mr. Sarafini, I remember you coming before us. There were concerns, and I may not state this 100% correct, but there were concerns that you had with, for lack of a better term, people kind of hanging out back around the pod and that type of thing. I know that you had expressed some attempts or measures, whether it was with lighting, whether it was with other means for trying to control and reduce any, any of that type of thing from going on. So, obviously, now you're removing the pod, correct?
Correct, the, to go back to the point and then walk through to that point. Initially, what we had was, we had a couple of like box trucks that we used for storage, obviously, minimal security with those, and we were finding a lot of needles and, you know, other paraphernalia kind of snuck in in between them, obviously indicating that, you know, there's a negative element that's been using that space. Since we put the pod in, obviously, we enhanced security with that and cleaned the whole area in between the building and the pod out. From there, we added lighting, cameras, and we've been able to really minimize anything. Thankfully, none of my people have found any more needles or anything else. We think we've gotten that well under control. And then, by putting the addition on, what we intend to do is replace the pod. The pod would stay there so long as, you know, the building construction is, is going on, and then once construction's done, pod would be removed. And, you know, now we would have a solid structure with no blind zones or dead zones in which, you know, we feel that a negative element could, could be doing anything.
And, and that was really going to be the ultimate question, was by actually putting in a permanent structure, replacing the pod, no offense to the pod, but obviously, it's going to look a lot nicer, and you're also going to be able to provide probably the best type of security you could have for that particular area. As you said, removing dead zones, any obstructions to, you know, law enforcement driving by, that type of thing. So, now you're going to have the pod out of there, and you're going to have a permanent structure.
Exactly, being all under, you know, obviously, a controlled roof and controlled walls, I can't see a better way to control that area.
And I would assume that you would maintain the lighting, the cameras, all that type of thing that you would have and that, that you actually installed with the pod, but now would be utilizing on the building.
Correct, to, to be perfectly honest, we will be enhancing that even more. As you can imagine, in my industry, while there may not be regulations, anybody who's remotely responsible takes that very seriously.
Well, let me ask you this, in terms of the parking spaces, and again, I'm sure you're probably the only one or the best one to know about your volume in terms of customers, that type of thing, is the reduced number of parking spaces going to be a problem or detrimental for the business?
I honestly don't think so. I mean, I can tell you that during the height of COVID, when the fear was out of control, yeah, we had some serious parking issues, but I don't believe we'll ever see something like that again. The reality is, while, you know, we have X number of spaces, that area that we're losing to the building has never been used for customer parking, so we're not losing spaces that were used. The, the one question that was raised by the, the planning board member in regards to the number of retail spaces for the automotive dealership, honestly, I refer to myself as a hobby dealership. I took over from a second cousin who had Crown Motors in Niskuna back in the 60s, and I just keep it alive, because it's a passion of mine. So, having two display parking spaces is more than sufficient for my needs, and, you know, I, I'm willing to literally put a self-limited, you know, written limit on that. So, I don't believe we will see any issues in regards to parking. If we do, obviously, you know, as a responsible business, I'm going to have to figure out how to deal with that, but I truly don't believe we will, based on what I've seen over the last, you know, 12 years of being there.
With the removal of the pod, do you gain that space as well? Or is that space part of where the building would lie?
That is space that the building will actually incorporate.
So, in actuality, the, the, the pod is occupying that space right now as it exists? So, at least some of it?
Exactly.
So, you can't use it for parking now anyway?
No, and, and that's why I say, as far as like the parking goes, there is no parking that we are literally going to be losing by adding this building. None, zip, zero, nada. I, I'm comfortable saying that, and I know it's not going to affect that number.
Thank you.
I would like to just mention, we are closing off the entrance, the curb cut entrance to Albany Street, as part of this design, which actually is going to help us gain two parking spots from the existing configuration.
Thank you for mentioning this, because I, that was going to be one of my questions. By looking at the diagram, that, does it show access from Albany Street?
I actually closed off, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's correct. Mr. Sarafini was requested to close off or temporary blockade the curb cut to Albany Street. However, with our discussions with the Schenectady County, they, they had preferred to close that off as well, and with the site design, the way we proposed it, it actually made sense and helped our site design to close that off. So, it, it's kind of helping everybody else, Schenectady, Niskuna, and Mr. Sarafini.
Okay, and where is, is the entrance to your business? Is it from State Street?
Entrances are on the side of the building, so they are from the parking lot side.
Okay, the parking lot side, okay.
You're talking into the building itself. You're talking into the building itself.
Into the building, yep.
Correct, they, they face the parking lot. And just as a note in regards to the closing off the Albany Street side, if, and hopefully Laura has this with her, but if you can refer back to the previous letter from my last appearance, the neighbor behind us actually felt that that was an enhancement because we had people rip tearing through the parking lot and zipping out onto Albany Street. A lot of times, they were ending up in his driveway because they were driving through so quickly. So, you know, we did that to enhance the, frankly, safety for my customers and employees as they cross the parking lot, but also because it helped our neighbors to, you know, minimize the unpleasant people zipping through.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Seraphini, with respect to your dealership, is, am I correct to assume that because you have two spaces that are reserved for display vehicles, that at any time you're, you're, you're selling two automobiles? Is that the volume that you're talking about?
Correct. I, I would not have more than two vehicles displayed on the lot at any one point in time. Frankly, I have one out there right now. So, you know, for me, I am not a large used car dealer. It, it is truly a hobby that just, it brings me joy.
Don't have to worry about trailers or anything like that, dropping off vehicles?
I've done that in the past, but frankly, it's just not in my business model.
Okay, so currently you don't have any trailers dropping off vehicles at your lot?
Oh, you mean like automotive trailers?
Yeah.
No, if, if we ever had a vehicle brought in that way, even prior to anything else, they would literally do what the new car dealers do is stop in the, the median or the center line in the road and unload the vehicle, but now we, we just, we don't source our vehicles in, in which that is necessary, so I, I've just never done it over the years.
I, I would assume that if you're only having one or two vehicles, that you would be able, any, any vehicle that was transporting a, a, a car on a bed would be able to pull into your lot, correct?
Absolutely. Any even remotely decent driver can back right in, drop off whatever was there and go, but typically, any vehicle that I'm purchasing, I literally drive it onto the lot myself, so there's no trailers or anything involved.
And, and if I recall correctly, with, with respect to the, someone was?
I heard it.
With respect to the original application to the, for the temporary structure, if I recall, there were some, you had box trucks and some other vehicles on the property that you were going to remove in consideration of having the, the storage container of, of the temporary structure approved, did you have a chance to remove those structures or those vehicles?
Absolutely, they are gone.
Great, great. I don't have anything else.
Mr. Seraphini, I'd just like to ask, I think in the, the last time that you appeared in front of this board, when it was granted, there was discussion of, as one of the other members mentioned before, fencing and lighting that would help protect the area along basically the Albany Street side. On the plan that's part of the package, there's still a chain link fence shown there. Can you talk a little bit about that and whether it's going, staying, et cetera?
Right now, we haven't made any decisions in regards to it. My personal thoughts are it's going to go. A lot of this, we plan to work with the, the planning department, and I believe they have like an architectural review board, and we want to make it as pleasing as we can while keeping it secure. So I personally think that the, the fence should come down on the Albany Street side, and we'd be doing just landscape on that side, and probably on the, the side of the building that faces west, we would just go in line with the building itself and just put like a gate there and keep that area closed off. You know, no decision has been made, but I am absolutely open to any suggestions or anything else that we think would be, you know, beneficial visually.
A question for Ms. Robertson. I just heard architectural review board, planning board, has it been referred to, the architectural review?
It has gone to the architectural review board, I believe, once, but it does still need more work on that end. The planning board kind of halts their review until it goes to the zoning board so that the applicant doesn't spend too much money on a, an application that could get denied, but it would get referred back to the planning board from you, and you could refer it, you know, with notes to continue to work with the architectural review board or just let the planning board do what it does, but I think the architectural review board is, is still a big part to play on this, at the planning board level anyway.
And the concern that you heard from the neighbor, did they give specifics as to what their concern was?
Yeah, unfortunately, all it said was she's not able to attend the meeting, and she was opposed to it for a variety of reasons, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just a point of reference, what, and I apologize, but I've lost my, my iPad here. What, we've got the two parking spaces variance, is that it?
And then there's two area variances, one to the side lot line for a total of 16.1 feet, and then I think one to the Albany Street right-of-way, which is a total of 47.3 feet. There's a lot of math in there because we wanted to acknowledge the old variances that had been granted. So if you look at it in conjunction with the area variances that are already there for the building, it's less, it's 37.3 feet and 1.1, but really, it's a total, this building sitting 2.7 feet from the Albany Street property line and 8.9 feet from the Western property line. But a lot of that is because the existing building sits that way, and then the addition is just carrying forward. So three variances total, two area variances and one parking variance for two spaces.
Thank you.
I'm assuming there's no one in the audience wishing to be heard, but I could be wrong. If there's someone in the audience wishing to be heard.
They could be online.
Hearing none, is anyone on the board willing to make a motion?
Yeah, Chairperson, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to deal with all three variances at once. I'm going to make a motion that we approve these variances. This is the second time this applicant has been before this board, once for, obviously, temporary reasons with storage issues, and now for a more permanent situation in terms of, of his building. Both times, I've been extremely impressed by the, the, the handle that this applicant has on his business, on, on his area, and on the problems presented by what I consider to be extremely unique property. This sits between two extremely busy streets in a, in a very extremely high-traveled and high-populated area. Many times, the area for negative reasons as much as positive reasons. This applicant has repeatedly confronted those issues and those problems in a positive fashion and has, has, I think, achieved a very positive business result where many others may have just folded up their tent. In terms of specifically the, the variances that are requested, I, I, I see absolutely, to, to achieve the business result the applicant is after, I, I see absolutely no other way that it can be achieved. Obviously, the pod was utilized with the understanding it was temporary, but this is a more permanent solution, again, because of the uniqueness of the property, how it's situated, where it's situated. There's no other way to achieve the result, and as the applicant has said, to not abandon the property to try and go someplace else, but to keep it where it's been and where it's been very successful. I see absolutely no reason that the, the variances are going to have a negative impact. Again, as I said before, this applicant has confronted his business issues and, and the neighboring issues with a very positive format. I think it can only improve the neighborhood. I think the fact that they, they're, part of all this is they're shutting off the, the access to Albany Street, doing some landscaping, doing some, some positive aesthetic features, again, is going to have a positive aspect on the neighborhood. I see absolutely no reason that the, the two, loss of the two parking spaces is, is going to have, again, any negative effect or is going to be a, a problem for the business. Mr. Seraphini knows his business better than any of us do, and I take him at his word that it is absolutely not going to have an effect, and the fact that the pod is being removed, although that's not part of the variance issue, it's part of the permanent building issue, the fact that the variances or the pod is being removed, I think is a big positive, as well as I think that, that it enhances, what they're going to do enhances the security factors in the area, which otherwise would not be done. So for those reasons, I move that we approve all three variances as requested.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that for all the reasons stated.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hoak?
Yes.
Ms. Pacico?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson McGinnis?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your variances have been granted. I'd like to thank you for working so well with the town and for choosing to do business in the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's time, and especially reviewing this multiple times for me. I really cherish the relationship that I have with Niskuna and would hope to continue success with Niskuna.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Is there any other business before the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
We're adjourned until August.